It is ten o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. The chairman says there's a court present. We'll do the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two point zero is additions and revisions to the agenda. Three point zero is correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, put your name and address in one minute comments in three minutes. Folks who are dialing in on your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself if you're on your computer. It's lower left-hand side of your computer screen. And just as a regular reminder that we are informal here, so as we move through the agenda, there are items that you want to provide feedback on, ask questions about. We welcome that. Any public comment at this point? Look like it. Okay, under correspondence, there are several items. Note. First, update this year 2020 special projects grant program final report from the Oregon Chair Chamber of Commerce. So for folks who are interested in seeing this one in particular, I think funded the pop in Arlington. So if folks are wanting to see how those funds were expended and some of the outcomes of that, that is always part of the court package, which is online as part of the court's agenda. Next up is a letter from Ivory Lyles, who's the vice provost of extension at OSU. They regularly just once a year send us an update on the fund balance. So basically, we contribute to OSU Extension being here every year. And the fund balance is just over eighty thousand dollars. And so Gillum County four H and Extension uses that to do their operations, basically. So that helps support a lot of programs to community members. Next up.
It sounded like they got an extension agent hired.
Yeah.
That my understanding.
Have they formally announced?
They have not formally announced, but it has been offered and accepted by their candidate.
Got it. So we should be hearing officially you, the new person is soon.
Might hear tonight at our fair board meeting, so it'd be nice. Yeah.
Next up is just an FYI that the governor Kotek did issue an executive order determining that Gillum and Douglas counties are in a drought emergency. So that's in your packet as well. Folks who are interested in reading that. It's significant in that it frees up or allows particularly producers in the region to access certain drought-related relief funds. And then last but not least, is a lovely letter from Bobby Joe Vaughn. Just thanking the frontier Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce in Gillum County. She was a recipient of some of the small business grant dollars that the fund for the chamber to distribute. And so just talks about her plans and the impact that those dollars made. So.
And I'll just make a note, she brought her coffee trailer to the fair.
To the fair. That's who the coffee trailer was.
I think so. And it was great.
Yes.
Except somebody unplugged it Saturday night and she had no cream products Sunday.
And no, but up until then, it was great.
Yeah.
So for all of these items, members of the public, if you're interested in reading Bobby Joe's letter, the drought declaration, any of this stuff, there is on the county court's website, there's a place where all of our agenda materials are stored. Under correspondence, you will find all of these documents if you would like to read them. Okay, let's move on to four point zero, which is the consent agenda. Questions?
Yeah, well, four point three. You can either pull it or have a quick discussion.
Let's have a quick discussion unless you have.
No, I'm in favor of whatever we can do to kill measure one ten. But this, what we're really doing in this, it looks to me like is we are simply asking to deal with the decriminalization part of the measure.
So I, that is one area I think that's worth sort of diving in. I made the assumption that we were supportive of continued state support for recovery services. And some of the programs CCS has launched to try to help folks who are in and going through recovery.
And the other reason I brought up just for the record.
Yeah.
For anybody that might listen is that, you know, my personal opinion is it's probably not dollars well spent in the state of Oregon because the people, amount of people that were recovered for the amount of money that's going to be spent is probably better spent fixing highways and other things. Just from, I've been doing this for thirty-two years and for the legislators to think that they're going to cure addiction through some sort of forced treatment is ridiculous. And I've put that on the record that that's how I feel about it. I don't have any problem with repealing the whole bill, but I will be in favor of repealing the decriminalization part, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I sort of, I think, took a more middle ground to your point, like some of the other.
So tenderly.
Yeah, some of the other counties wanted full repeal, partly so that folks understand like these dollars are marijuana tax dollars. And so a lot of these services are being funded by diverting the county shares of the marijuana tax into treatment. Our share is relatively small, as you might imagine. And in general, I obviously am more than willing to alter any of the language if the commissioners want to do that. But given, I think, the important role that CCS plays in the community and the fact that this is sustaining a lot of the new programs and things that they're wanting to do, I felt that they could put it to better use in the region than what we would be giving up at the county side for the amount of money that.
No, I don't disagree and I, you know, I hope there's some benefit out of this. Not some of the news stuff on the news that I just don't agree with when they say that housing homelessness is causing the drug problem. The drug problem is causing homelessness. It's, they've got it backwards some of the way.
But you did run this by Kimberly according to this.
Yeah, I did have Kimberly take a look just to make sure I wasn't saying anything in here that she doesn't see in the bills that her folks aren't seeing. So if we decide to move forward, she, I think, intends to share with the other counties that are in CCS's region and see if there are additional people who will consider passing it.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. So moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of September sixth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Consider approval of September sixth, twenty twenty-three executive session minutes and consider approval of proclamation number twenty twenty-three dash zero two. A proclamation calling for the repeal of provisions enacted pursuant to ballot measure one ten of twenty twenty. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed motion carries? Okay, under unfinished business, five point one is discussion regarding possible revisions to the Economic Enhancement Fund Ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero two. So just to kind of recap, we touched briefly on this during the last meeting. And Pat had actually brought this up, I think, the very first year he came on the court.
Yes, I did.
You did. And I think have occasionally reminded us that maybe we still hadn't looked at it yet. And so, but for those who are uninitiated, the Economic Enhancement Fund are the dollars that are coming in from Waste Management for our host fees. The county courts way back when they first inked deals with Waste Management, created an ordinance basically directing where those funds went by percentages. And then the ordinance also outlines the rules that the assessor's office follows related to the homestead rebate checks that go out to homeowners. And so really the purpose of today's discussion, I think, is going to be focused primarily on page four of eight, which is the article three, which is the distribution of funds. I did reach out to the assessor's office because we always find little hiccups in the language that's unclear on the homestead rebate. And if we plan on reopening, it's an opportunity to clean some of that up. So if the court decides to move forward, I think there will be some, just some administrative things that the assessor's office may ask us to tweak language on to clarify things that they've run into previously that were unclear when we were trying to issue checks. And in particular, what the approval or denial process looks like if somebody gets a denial. So anyways, I would expect to see some of that administrative language. Unless you guys want to dig into that, I think there're going to be things like, right now, it's not really clear what the appeal process looks like, so it comes to us, but like we don't have a form. Occasionally, we have somebody who's upset that's been denied and we kind of wing it and say they need to write us a letter and come see us. I think I've had two since I've been here and neither of them have followed through and actually come to the county court. So, but we still probably need to just get that in writing. And then, and then there's some dates in here that I think were causing some consternation in the assessor's office that they asked us to remove.
Does that usually follow around whether or not they live in their, the actual home or not? Is that what the issue is a lot of times?
They have to, that's part of it, whether they actually are qualifying as, because it has to be the primary home. And then I think that they've run into some issues when people have not been up to date on their own property taxes. They need to be in good standing in order for that to happen. So there's been some where people are behind and then upset that they didn't get their check, that they haven't actually, they're not in good standing on their tax side. So there's some stuff like that that have come up with previous folks.
So they want to just clear that language up so they have a process?
Yeah, so right now, it basically just says the ruling of the county court shall be final in the language, but it doesn't really say. Basically, it says that Chet's office issues a letter letting them know if they've been denied. And then it says there's an appeal process, but it doesn't say like how you access the appeal process. So I think we would just clean up like, like we would probably just have Delaney and Miranda maybe develop like what a form would look like. So we have a standard thing. We probably put it on the website. And then people who receive that letter who want to come to us to ask for an appeal, know what the steps are a little bit more clearly.
And that would be in this part of this document.
There would at least be a little bit more information than basically, I think, what it says is that they have to appeal it to the county court and the county court's decision is final, but there's a lot of gray area in between like, what is, what is that exactly? So this way, at least it's a little clearer. When people get a letter, I think Chet's office will be able to say, you know, if you wish to challenge this, go to this website and, and there's a form and you have to contact them. We need to get it scheduled kind of thing. So, so, but that will all be, nothing's really changing other than just making sure that we're clear with the public on what the, like who to contact, basically.
What the process is.
What the process says.
Can anybody bring the host fees agreement? I forgot to bring it. I've probably got it. I don't know if I got it.
So those, that basically covers, I think we're talking about maybe one or two changes in the first three pages. The very end, just so you know, the last pages, the rationale for distributions and, which is under A, and the attachment B. Attachment B is just a history. So we just update it every time we make any changes so that future courts can go back and see what the policy was back in the nineties and two thousands. But it's not, it's not substantive. It's just.
So I, I did have a question about this. When it talks about that law enforcement line item capped annually at three hundred thousand, you know, it's one percent of it. And then down here on the same thing on the business development loan fund capped annually at seven hundred fifty thousand, four percent. So does that mean if it reaches the three hundred thousand, then what happens to that extra? Or is that?
So I think, yeah, so I think per the ordinance, I'm trying to remember what it says in here.
That's a good question, Wayne.
Yeah, so it says all the monies, it's on page one of under administration. It says the monies in excess of the capped amounts will be allocated to the economic development line item. Okay. So Nathan does the calculation. Once it hits the three hundred thousand.
So since we haven't been actually managing a business development loan fund, it's ending up in the economic development line item?
No, so this, one thing I do want to change is I want to just, I would like to propose just X-ing out the word loan.
Okay, one thing to keep in mind. I think we need to keep in mind is Maquette is very, very active at administering small business loans, which I think will be a great help for us, but we might have to add some funding into that. But they do a great job of getting some startup businesses going.
So here's what I would suggest, why we might just think about X-ing the loan out is that this is the fund that is also supporting the chamber's small business.
Oh, loan, a grant deal?
Both of them. So for flexibility's sake, I would suggest, we can talk about whether we want to up that percentage if we're also thinking about supporting Maquette. But I think if we X out at least the loan part, then it can be used for either grants or loans. And I can clean up the language in the rationale, which is the attachment A, saying that it can be used for either. And the whole point is to support business development.
Absolutely.
In the region. And so then future courts, if they decide that they want to expand a program or start a new program, don't have to come back and touch the ordinance because it's basically all for business development.
That makes sense.
Okay, yeah, because loan, the word loan denotes that they are going to pay it back.
We haven't.
Me.
My time here, we're not, haven't done anything with any loans. I think most of the loans that have, I don't know if we got any active loans left.
There are, I'd have to ask Nathan, I think there's maybe, like the SWCD loan is still active, I think. So maybe just two or three. And I think we've got, yeah, maybe two or three others out there. But yeah, they're, I mean, it's.
It's not a regular thing like they used to do.
No, when, when, when I came on the court with Sherry and Leslie, we decided to basically pause the program and then COVID happened. And so we were supporting through grants rather than loans.
So where's the four percent been going that we haven't been using in that line item? Either you got the part that's gone to the county grant, county grant program.
So it's sitting in there and revolving.
In that.
In that, yeah. So it rolls over, anything that's unused rolls over until it hits that cap. So when Nathan and Rachel go to reconcile the accounts and when we go to write the new budget, they'll do the calculation on what's left, that'll roll over. They'll add the percent, they'll add the four percent coming in, that'll get the new total for the new budget year. And then whatever comes out for the chamber, et cetera, draws it back down. So it's just kind of in that, but it stays, it's supposed to be accounted for within that line item year over year. Okay, so tentatively, I think, and for folks who may not know what this process looks like, this is just getting a sense from the commissioners of where they would like us to go with this. We actually have to schedule hearings and readings of the ordinances later. But I wanted to, so think of this as kind of work session where we're figuring out what we might want to do.
So I'm, I want to go back to just a few of my original concerns from a couple of years ago.
Sure.
And, and I think if you read the host fees agreement, it's very clear that it's to be used for economic development.
Yeah, I emailed the host fees agreement to all of you so you can look at it.
Well, I'm, I'm positive that's in there.
It's four point three.
Yep. And, and my questions have always been with the cities, the three of them. There's no monitoring where that money goes. It's just going to them. We don't know whether it went to economic development or not. General fund, we kind of have the same issue with what's going on in Gillum County General Fund and also the road fund. And then we use the theory that, well, we can kind of qualify that it was used for economic development somehow. But it's not very clear when you look at the ordinance and it's, you're not tracked as economic development as it comes from Waste Management. So that's, that's always been a bit of my concern. I don't know what you do about that, but it, it, I mean, we, we give six percent to the cities and they run their general fund with it. And there's no economic development to speak of that's been going on on this end.
So I think for the cities, maybe what we could do is just kind of go back and maybe talk to.
I wouldn't say that there's none because they have made the investment in the motel now. And even if they're doing things that, that are going to increase capacity in their system, which there's some stuff they're working on, but I don't think it's specifically these funds went from here to here.
Yeah. And I know, I think the city of Condon definitely, given their activity in housing and other things are probably, I think, I don't know that they're tracking, like they have a fund and they're specifically pulling it out of that fund, but I suspect that if pressed, Catherine could come up with documentation on all.
And maybe, and maybe that's all that we need to kind of have a follow-up on that there is some.
That's what I'm kind of wondering is maybe if we decide to do a revised ordinance, assuming we keep contributions for the cities, which I do think, you know.
You can cut the cities for what we're giving them out of that. And I think it, I think that probably needs to stay where it's at.
I agree. And, but I think we could maybe send them all a letter and say, just this is just a reminder, like your allocation is going to stay consistent. However, our agreement with Waste Management says these funds will be used for these kinds of purposes. And so we would ask that you guys be mindful, basically, of making sure that these funds are directed towards things that have clear economic development purposes. And, you know, I think for the city of, honestly, of the three of them, for the city of Lone Rock, it's probably the toughest because they really are using that to run the city. I think it supports their water system, a couple of other things, but and not that we don't want every dollar to go toward it, but I also think like the city of Lone Rock doesn't have a tax base. I mean, they don't tax, so it's really their only way to actually make sure that their citizens have water. And so maybe on, on some level, it's important that we keep them sort of up and going. But I think for certainly Arlington and Condon.
And like how much money, we're probably not talking that much money.
Oh, I don't think so. I don't know. I have a budget in front of me on how much goes to Lone Rock, but it's not, I don't think it's.
Well, well, what would half a percent of four million be?
Is that what it was last year?
Well, it's over.
I think it's about, maybe about.
Later out. Lenny's already got it done.
She's doing the math off the.
Twenty thousand?
Okay, so maybe we just go through, one, I want to just capture that we would strike a loan out of the bottom one. So it'd be business development fund. And that will allow future courts to decide what that looks like. Could be grants, could be loans, whatever. So I'm going to X that out. Are you, previously in twenty twenty, when we opened this, one of the things we did is take some caps out. Would you like, do you want to keep this cap?
I would say in that one, I would take the cap out, but.
Take it out. Okay, I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that, um, removing the cap on the business development fund? I honestly don't think.
How much does it?
The chamber moves enough money through there that I think, I think the chamber is moving at least as much probably as coming in. So I'm not sure that they're ever.
There was only a hundred and thirty thousand, I think. So they're never reaching that.
They're not really reaching it because they're distributing enough every year that it's not hitting it.
But did they originally put that in there just so that it wouldn't like balloon into this huge amount?
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, so originally, originally those loans were being generated by the county. And I think the idea was that one, they were less, they were more prescriptive, you know, so it was for folks who are like taking over new businesses or starting them. And, and I think maybe way back when there was maybe a feeling like there wasn't enough demand to, like, it would grow indefinitely, basically, because you'd get maybe one or two a year at most. And if, if there's several years where there's no activity, you have all these economic dollars that are being tied up in this thing that is not actually being utilized. So.
Yeah.
But at least from what the chamber has been doing, and especially if Maquette is going to be at, if we potentially are layering loans through there, I don't think they're going to hit the cap, but I'm not sure that there's any harm then in even not having a cap because I think it's being used now.
And the same probably with the law enforcement line item.
The law enforcement one may be a different story.
Law enforcement, I think your problem with the law enforcement, even with that line item in there at all is our population hasn't really increased. And, you know, what is the economic development on the law enforcement side that we're doing? And maybe, you know, I mean, there's improvements and things I know they make with communications and whatnot, but what is, what qualifies as economic development?
Yeah, so, okay.
You want to stay pleased that they live to begin with so that people want to.
This is not supposed to fund what's already in place.
Okay.
And funded. It's, it's an additional funding and maybe it's additional funding that's funding that now, but that's not what this money is supposed to be used for.
They must have at one point felt that that was an important part, that they put it in there.
It must have been short for some reason.
Um, okay, so one second, I just want to go back and capture whether you want to retain the cap or remove the cap from the business development fund.
Remove the cap.
We can remove it.
Okay, so let me capture that. And the percentage. Maybe we'll get to percentages at the end, because there may be some others that we're reconsidering. So before we touch the percentage. Okay, so the law enforcement line item, I don't know the whole history of it, but here's what we have that is the ration. To minimize the impact of state funding decisions on local law enforcement needs, this fund will be capped annually at thirty, three hundred thousand dollars. Funds in this item are authorized for the following purposes, subject to Gillum County contracting policy, inmate medical costs, unexpected inmate costs not covered by the state, capital crime unbudgeted expense and emergency services, communications, equipment. So my, my understanding is that Chris does, when it is being used, it's typically for Chris to upgrade radio equipment for the sheriff's office and partners. Some of that is helping some of our partner agencies, so other first responding agencies.
Because I think she does all the radios and pagers.
For, for everybody.
All, yeah.
And so that is supporting that, the.
And those are not getting cheaper.
Correct. The other stuff in here, I think, is, I don't know that I've seen any other expenses other than radio equipment come out since I've been here out of that line item. And so it definitely continues to hit its cap, when I will say that it.
Well, how can it get to its, am I not doing the math right? One percent of four hundred thousand is not anywhere near three hundred thousand.
But see, remember it revolves.
All revolves.
So if Chris goes a couple of years where she takes nothing out of it and it just builds.
Three hundred thousand is more than the six hundred thousand the cities get.
I mean, when it's capped, yeah, in a, in a single year. I mean, when it's capped, yeah, um, in a in a single year. So. I, my. Like I said, I was not around when it got added, my understanding was that there was a concern that if there's. An unexpected event. A murder. Something that is particularly costly to prosecute. The idea was that there would be this sort of fund that's sitting there so it doesn't blow open the sheriff's office. Over on the general fund side of the ledger. That's all I know about it, I don't have any other comments on that. But that's the history as far as I know, what it's been, what I know that it has been used for is radio. Equipment.
Just a question, this, we anticipate a joint project. To build a. A sheriff's building for. You know, enhanced. Response time. And. Could potentially link with economic development. Uh, is that a different program? That we're that we're talking about here, or is. Is it appropriate to consider? How. Maybe we save that for the joint meeting. But.
I don't know with the language you said, what it was supposed to be used for, if that would fall under it or not.
I don't think, yeah, currently.
Wouldn't, I mean, you could you could change it to where it did. I mean, that's more along the lines of economic development than maybe. A murder. Not that a murder is not that a murder would be impactful to the. It's it's it would be a, you know. Obviously a problem, but it's not necessarily how you can qualify it under economic development.
So.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah.
This process.
No, it's good thought.
Probably more discussion.
Or does the capital projects. Part of the ordinance is already there, cover that?
Well, so we have a very healthy capital projects budget um, that I've been. Squarling away some of the SIP money for um. That's going to help support the event center and the bus barn and a bunch of other crap, but there's plenty in there, I mean, I've been. Setting aside quite a bit when I make the request every year. Maybe there's sort of a more fundamental question. Is. I think if Gary and Chris were here, not to put words in their mouth, but. They asked for it because they definitely see a potential liability or a problem. It got stuck in here because it's a fund that's more stable, yeah. But. That doesn't mean that we couldn't. I don't know if they would feel comfortable with this because something under an ordinance is definitely more. Guaranteed than something, say, under the SIPs, which is not controlled by an ordinance. But I wonder if there's a concern about how to actually tie this to economic development in a more direct way. If. The court committed in the next budget to setting aside. A portion of the SIPs instead, which don't have those kind of restrictions on them. That. Then the sheriff's office was still beginning what they need. But we wouldn't have to.
Yeah, it obviously doesn't make sense shorting them for their concern and risks out there.
Correct, yeah, I think, I mean, I'm, I don't think anybody's questioning like the need for it, maybe the question is just, is this the right.
Place.
Funding stream for to support the need. Um, so is that something you would like me to go have a discussion with Gary and Chris about, maybe the possibility of moving it under the SIP instead?
But then we worry about the SIP sun setting, so. Down the road, we'd be like back to.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Um.
We can be hopeful that doesn't happen.
Yeah, and um. It's, you know, as the SIPs roll off, we'll get a better sense in the general fund of what kind of resources, and so maybe eventually. If what we're seeing is that the property tax base. Actually can support this kind of a a line of expenditures directly in the sheriff's budget. Which is actually ideal, I think, probably from a.
Absolutely.
Control standpoint, um, I think. Currently, as it's written, it's a little unclear whether the sheriff's office needs to come ask us to release the funds or not, like, that's not exactly clear. Um, but where it's budgeted and the general and the general fund budget. Uh, Gary and Chris would have a lot more flexibility to spend those funds. Under the procurement policy, so. There may be some, but we don't really know what's going to happen until the SIPs start rolling off. So.
You know, what we're going to lay in the tax base, what's coming in for tax revenue, which will increase our general fund.
Exactly. So maybe as a proposal A. Perhaps it's for me to go have a conversation with Gary and Chris about.
You know, when I talked to Chet the other day, and I think that. Shepherd Flat comes off in three years maybe. And it originally was. Under a billion and is now set for over a billion with the repower.
I think he told me. Is it one of the Junipers, I think, Lenny Juniper is coming off. Next year. So we'll get a little bit of a preview, I think, on what it does to the tax base, then we'll be able to see. What it actually does to the valuations um. And that may then allow us at some point to look at moving. That those.
Two of them coming off, but one of them's really small, it's part of most of it's in rural county, I think.
Yeah, but I think he's, he told me there was. He told me there's one that's more substantial though, so it'll be instructive, I think, for how.
And that's set by the state, right?
Correct, it's through a simple assessment, so so for the record, don't be calling your local assessor complaining about the valuations, he doesn't have any control over that.
Call your state representative.
I definitely think you need to have that visit with uh, Kristen.
Okay, Gary. Okay, so we will, I will just tend to blame, I'm going to mark this as a follow up. Okay, let's go through. Let me go through the ones that I think are probably not things we want to talk about. Tinkering one. The homestead rebate, I'm assuming we want to continue. So how this works is about eleven point five percent um. Basically, the budget committee sets. The maximum amount of checks, the 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 value of the check. Basically for individuals. Um, Chet does his assessment of uh, who's eligible, who's not. Um. Those checks get cut out of this one eleven point five percent of the fund. And then the remainder rolls over into a fund that's a. Called the rebate endowment. And it just sits there basically for a rainy day, so um. So that's what we're doing with those funds, so the ones that are unexpended out of the homestead rebate line item. Roll into the endowment fund line item, which is at the very bottom. And we set aside three percent for that every year as well, so between the two, it's like fourteen fourteen point five percent between the two. Um, I am positive we do not want to touch the economic development line item. I'm assuming. Uh, the north end and south end special projects grant line items are. Heavily used for our competitive grants program, that's where those special project grant funds come out of. Um, so I do not recommend. Removing those, I guess there could be potential discussion on whether the percentage eventually might need to go up. As the SIP dollars come down. Um, but I don't know that we necessarily need to touch that, that may be a future court decision. Um, the revolving transition.
Did we use all of it this last time?
No, we did not. Um, there's still a balance left in there and it's a revolving fund, so it just gets, it can build and so. I recommend that we don't do a fall grant cycle this year for special projects in order to allow that fund to build again. Because we had some pretty big ones come through, so that um.
Then they'll open up next spring again.
And I think especially since we have really narrowed the scope of the competitive grants where projects were not really fall under there. Now are coming into the special projects, some of those are big bigger capital, well, there's thirty thousand or so going out the door, so. And I think. That two percent is roughly, what, seventy thousand a year maybe?
Going to be around, well, forty one percent, so.
Seventy eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, probably a little more than that, because I think they've been hitting a little more than about four and a half million and. Post fees and a figure and four.
Yeah. So. So I, my recommendation would be to keep them, they do roll over, um, so we do an internal accounting of those after. The court makes awards. Delaney, um, and I think Rachel will be keeping track of that um. Between the two of them to make sure that we know for the upcoming budget, how much was carried over and then adding the four or the two percent. Um, the revolving transition line item is a statutory requirement, um, and that is uh, meant. For if and when the um. The site ever closes. So it's meant to be the transitionary funding. For the county um. It is a very small amount compared in comparison with the amount that we use to fund all of these great other things that we do, so. But I don't know that I would recommend doing anything more than just leaving it as it is and um. Hopefully being, making smart investments, but these other things will build a tax space that allows us to still do. Make good investments.
That is the goal.
Yes. Okay, so am I correct in assuming? That all of those line items that I just went through. Basically, everything under the law enforcement line item. Were okay with keeping.
Yep.
And the percentages look good.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, the cities we already talked about, okay with those percentages as well?
Yep.
Okay, um, so we are down to. Gillon County General Fund. Gillon County General Road Fund. Uh, County Capital Projects. So. Here's the thing. We have been saying. To our community partners. I took office five years ago. That. The gravy train at some point. May slow down. And that we don't want folks to be. Caught flat footed, not doing what they need to do internally to shore up their own sustainability. And and risk community partners failing because they were counting on funds that eventually sums up it. Specifically talking about the SIPs um. This is an example, I think. The general fund in particular, the twenty three percent of an opportunity for us to. Lead by example. Um, that twenty three percent represents a little over a million dollars that goes into the general fund. I believe the current budget has us carrying over. About six hundred thousand dollars. Um, which means roughly four hundred thousand of these funds are being used to actually fund. Departments within the general fund. I actually think. That we can get to zero. Um. But our folks are not going to be sharpening their pencils next budget season. If we continue to operate in this thing that, hey, we have unlimited resources. And so my suggestion would be. For us to consider diverting those general fund dollars into some of the economic. Development priorities that we've identified in our strategic plan, specifically. To help support a childcare endowment, a permanent funding structure for our childcare providers, our early education providers.
Do you have any idea? I mean. You've surely done some math on. What it would take to establish an endowment that would actually be sustainable?
It's a big number. So um. So. I'll give you high level, like, I'm not here to specifically pitch the endowment, I think the first discussion is like. Do we want this money to continue going to into the general fund or do we want to divert it into economic development priorities that we've identified? But from a high level perspective, um. An endowment would. In order to be sustainable, needs to be managed by. A nonprofit that can actually invest it in places that. Local governments have prohibited from investing dollars, so we can't. We can't put it into an a permanent endowment like a nonprofit can, so we would have to look at partnering potentially.
How do we do that with the homestead endowment?
So that homestead endowment, it doesn't function like an actual endowment. So the idea of a permanent endowment is you put the money in, you never touch the principal, and then the the interest is what supports the activity. This endowment is really kind of a misnomer because it's really just sitting in an account. Um, it doesn't have any. Restrictions on it ever being tapped into, and so what Nathan and I have talked about, we look at that as. Really what we're talking about is if. Waste management is no longer here, say, in, I don't know however many years. That we're basically just stashing that money away.
That fills space for a hundred.
Yeah, and that that and that those dollars then will continue the homestead rate rebate for a period of time. Ten years, twenty or something like that, it wouldn't be, it's not a permanent endowment. In the same way that. What I've been thinking about with early education would be. Um. And part of that is, I'm not sure, actually, we would have to look into, it might be worth looking into whether we could actually turn this homestead rebate. Into an actual permanent endowment. Um. But uh.
If that's been going on there. For how long?
This homestead rebate one?
And we're not touching it?
I don't know if they started at the beginning.
Within that fund now, I guess.
Um, if they did it clear back at the beginning. I know that the fund has, I think it just over eight million. In it. Uh, maybe eight and a half. Um. And we sweep in about. I want to say about maybe a quarter million. Out of this eleven point five every. So it's, I mean, it's growing, the last, I think, if we had like a chart. The last couple of years have really climbed a lot more when tonnage has been up. Um.
So another, you got into. A. Boom. Bunch of houses were built. You could pay a lot more in a homestead. Than we are today. It's a thought.
I do think it would be worthwhile. Let me go up that Rachel loose on this question. On whether there is a mechanism to actually turn that eight point five million that we have sitting there into a permanent. Endowment and what that looks like, if, I don't, I don't even know if we're legally able to do that as a local government, there may be restrictions on doing that.
That's not worth looking at.
It's not my area of expertise, so, but we can look into it. On the early education. To your question. So I spoke with Oregon Community Foundation, who runs a lot of these on behalf of nonprofits. Our scholarship committees have their endowment sitting over there with them. And they said uh, that they. Tell uh. They tell their folks to expect about a four percent. Um, distribution. So what that means is. To. To meet. What we committed to the early learning centers. This year. It would be roughly, I think, a twelve to fourteen million dollar endowment.
Should be sustainable.
To be, to meet what we committed this year. So. Keep in mind. That I think like this has to move in tandem with advocacy with our federal and state partners. Because they need to actually. Be fully funded what it costs, like we, this is not intended to backfill everybody else's.
Yeah.
Um, shorting of our early education providers. Um. But I look at it this way, it's a lot, it's a lot of money, that is to be sure. But. We can either decide that year by year, we're going to hand out. A check to keep them operational. And year by year, we go through those millions of dollars because it will add up. You know, we committed almost six hundred thousand this year, so. Every two years, we commit one point two million, um, if we continue on this trajectory. And. So in twenty years, roughly, we will have spent about twelve million dollars. On these entities. And then on year twenty one. We're going to have a request for the next check.
So, within the endowment, help me with this. To get to where you got the twelve and a half million, so sustain sustainable, how do you make it from there to you bank twelve and a half million?
So. I think. To do it well, honestly, like the first years of the endowment, probably need to take that disbursement. That four percent disbursement, turn it right back into the. So they wouldn't. Give it out to the early learners. Invest it back into the principal.
Yeah.
Until you reach. Until you reach sort of a critical mass where it starts to be, um. A large enough sum that you can do both. So that's not to say like, oh, the county could fund this and then stop funding on the competitive grants, but I just think. For me, long term, I personally like the idea of building things. That fifty years from now. Whoever inherits these communities and these positions of authority, look back and say. Look at this resource that we have. That nobody around us has because they were spending on the need of the day rather than thinking about long term, but is the community gonna need? And particularly with early education, my hope is that we always have. Babies and toddlers and preschoolers around here. And that we have a workforce that is young and needs those services and. I just don't see the need ever going away and. There will come a time, I'm afraid, where we don't have these abundance of resources and I. Just worry about the idea that we're, we're putting out the fire today and that is great, we still need to do that. But then what's it all for long term if in the end, twenty years from now, the centers are looking around and we don't have. Funds anymore. And we're all trying to fit everything into this particular fund because. All of the great things that we could do with the SIP dollars, we don't have those expendable resources and I, I mean. This, the, these are the things that I worry about, honestly, is.
I guess the only thing that, that thought that I have is. We are in the middle of. Not knowing where we're going based on possible industry coming in, which I have a meeting with today. And that would change all of this.
Absolutely.
To where, um. We'd be looking at this completely different and. So just.
So I think the beauty of, uh, possibly looking at some endowments as well. For key areas that we know are gonna be long term things is that when we do have companies. That are interested in investing there and we are, are negotiating abatements and trying to look for community that we have. Existing vehicles that we can say, here. Stick those five million dollars in this fund. And we know that the. Community members in the, this county fifty years from now are still gonna be reaping those benefits.
Yeah, I guess that my, my thought. Not really digging into the numbers anonymous that you put that in there for a while, they're still there, we haven't used it. And then if that comes along and gets to twelve and a half million in the next two years. Or half of that is a big deal. Then it's. I mean, that's a, it's a really good way in negotiating to have that endowment already set up. I mean, we're struggling day getting. Employer. Buy in to help us with daycare stuff, even though they know it's important.
So one thing I would expect. Um, is that, and this came up actually in the walk-in discussions that we had. Some of the employers around the table were suggesting. There needs to be a middle area, so we've got some employers that are large enough that probably can afford to like. Pick up an entire slot for an employee, you know, um, as a benefit. But we've got a lot of employers who think that this is important, but they can't shell out that kind of money, but maybe they contribute. A thousand dollars a year. You know, maybe they can do ten type of thing that could all basically go into an endowment that would be. A permanent way for those folks who are contributing. With eventually the idea, I think. Really like moving toward ensuring that. Like our strategic plan says. Every kiddo that lives under the age of five that's in this county has access to a slot, it's reasonably priced. You know, all of those things that we know are critical for folks to be able to go to work and businesses and all the things we want them to do, so.
So I had a. Community member throw an idea out to me today and I'll throw it out right now, just so you can chew on it on all this. Uh, since it would be fairly close to our largest employer, maybe we should turn. The wheat lab into a daycare facility.
Interesting.
You could actually bus kids from here to there. Um, I mean, there's, there, there's some obstacles to it, obviously, but you've got even people from Condon, if you got overflow would have. Drop them off in their way to work. But they're throwing it out there.
I think, let me ponder that, I'll move that around. So here's my, yeah. That maybe wanted to throw out there. The other thing I would say, I won't touch the road fund right now, I don't know where you, how you feel about that.
Well, I think we can. Think we need to take a look at the same third. Yeah, I, I need to do some work on it.
I will say the tricky thing on the road fund for me is that. It is, so folks are aware. Um, that property taxes cannot by law. Go toward county roads. So all of the SIPs rolling off, where we're talking about having an increased tax base that can pour other county functions, all of that is great. But the road department, which is the single biggest budget individually that we have in the entire eighty million dollar budget that we run. Um, we cannot touch those funds legally. To fix roads. So we're gonna have a problem. If, like, there's just no, I, there's no place else in the budget other than the SIPs, which have sunsets to be able to support what the road department does. So there's bigger structural issues in terms of how we finance it that we're gonna have to. We or somebody, future court is gonna have to figure out eventually. I just feel like it may be. Like, how we figure out what that plan is.
You can count on ODOT, can you?
No, no, and ODOT is gonna struggle severely in the next five years.
Yeah, I think so.
Um, I, I project they're gonna try to cut counties. Just based on gas tax going to. Um, electric vehicles and they haven't even got a system in place to recapture any of that. And, um. So we don't know what that looks like to start with, they're already trying to pinch it. And, um. Internally in Gillen County, we have definitely a road advisory committee where. I would say windmills and solar projects and what's going on the north end doesn't necessarily their highest concern. It's how do you pave every road in Gillen County is their highest concern? And that's a, you know, probably a two million dollar a year. Investment we make into county roads each year. To even try to get there someday. And then you've also got Cheater Springs laying out here and other two million dollars with conversations around what to do about it, so. It's hard right now in this. Environment to look at cutting that and, um. Yet I think that we gotta make sure we don't have any fat in certain areas and. Yeah, it's a. And it's, I mean. Just Gillen County roads in general were built and made for. How big a hair combines and what size trucks and what puts around on them today.
Oh yeah, when we left today, there were people moving big equipment, then I thought. Wouldn't want to meet them on most of our roads, most of our county roads. Pretty narrow, pretty big sprayers and.
So I mean, I think that, you know, if we go through the budget process, we look at. What we can do to trim here and there, really, really dive into that side of it, but I, I don't think I would touch this at this point either.
Okay. So here's what I'm suggesting. What if we? The other one that's in there is the County Capital Projects Fund, and I will say that I have. When I started, first budget that I helped put together, so five years ago. I started diverting, I think about one point five million out of the SIP fund over into this sort of rainy day fund for capital projects. So these are county owned government buildings. Um, to Jett's question about where the sheriff's money would come out of that, it's, that's the fund that we would use for those. I feel like the amount that we're diverting out of the SIP isn't more than sufficient to meet those building needs, short term and long term. I don't have the budget off the top of my head, but I, there's several million dollars.
I would agree that, you know, even, as long as you're. Thoughtful about what needs to happen and knowing that potentially you could build Twilight out and you lose it when you're planning for it and we have funds there that. We should be able to fix capital. Situation for a long time in the future.
And there is also, you know, I mean, we're about to do a major renovation in the courthouse for ADA, uh, staff. There is also, and we have never tapped into, a process through the legislature to address courthouse upgrade needs, so.
There's a number of counties that are getting a bunch of funding.
Oh yeah, a lot of our neighbors actually, um, Moro County got a huge chunk of money in the legislature and I think, uh.
County did too.
Crooked it and Yumitala, and there's a formal process that AOC works with each of the counties to identify priorities, those are what get.
Columbia County that wanted really bad, I don't know if they've gotten any.
I don't know. They have a whole way that they, a matrix that they figure priorities. We haven't engaged in that process because we've had funds to deal with roofing and all of the immediate needs that come up and. So if we ever, the future court ever wanted to consider a major.
A lot of that funding through the justice court side?
I believe so. Um, so. Oh, Delaney is telling me we have six point eight million right now sitting in the capital projects fund. So well over what I think we need even for pending projects happening next year. Um, so all of this to say, here's what I'm wondering how you guys would feel. Assuming. I can figure out something with a sheriff that in court around the law enforcement line item. Plus the County Capital Projects Fund. I am wondering. How you guys would feel about exploring a housing development. Line item. That we could potentially look at partnering with. Maybe the port, maybe somebody else. Where we decide we want, and that those dollars are dedicated dollars. That are going to support. Housing development for workforce. Assuming, you know, and we would figure out with whichever the partner is. It's not a lot of money, five percent, I think I calculated it's about two hundred thousand dollars a year. That would not preclude, for instance, the port from coming in on the competitive grant side also, asking for funds through the SIP. But this would start a dedicated stream, basically saying there's two hundred thousand that. The port or whoever can count on to go toward the development up here. Uh, the stuff they're working on in Condon. You know, wherever the port board decides to sort of their next project. And that the general fund dollars, the twenty three percent. Which I could be, I could be squishy on that a little bit too. If we wanted to do a little bit more towards housing, would be going towards supporting early learning. And that we would figure out, we would.
So you're talking about a million a year, what, now, now how much towards housing?
So right now it would be five percent.
Out of the twenty three?
Out of the twenty, no, so what would happen is we would take the capital.
Oh, out of the capital projects.
So that four percent, we would just stop diverting into capital projects because we've been diverting SIP dollars into there.
Million on the endowment side.
Um, and then assuming the law enforcement, we can reach an agreement with Gary. So that would be five percent so far, that's what I'm saying is. Like, if you wanted to adjust downwards slightly, this twenty three percent, I think that could happen too. Um, but I'm wondering about specifically calling out early education sustainability. I don't think we need to say in the ordinance exactly the plan for an endowment, all that kind of stuff, because I feel like that has to mature a little bit more. But in the next budget, so the current budget, these dollars have already been allocated and budgeted. So when we go to write the next budget. We'll know, okay, this percentage needs to go for housing and then the port or whoever. I just threw this out, I have not talked to Jett about this at all, um, then. Then the port knows year after year that they've got this percentage for sure, that can go toward housing. And then again, for, for needs that are beyond that, we still have the competitive grants. Program that I think will continue, like I'm not suggesting this is displaced, but these would be guaranteed funds.
So, let's take early learning Condon. We pull a million out of the host fee for this. And they need money to operate next year when we do.
So we. I, this is, this is sort of this weird kind of, the endowment needs to build to a size that's actually gonna work. So. I think these dollars would be specifically going into endowment. That is creating interest and being reinvested, building over time. The competitive grants program stays. Focused. On. Economic development priorities that we've identified in the strategic plan, so we continue to support operations. We continue to fund capital projects that are coming in for housing. At some point, I think we're gonna need to. Look at building an early learning center at this end of, an actual center.
Wouldn't have to, you could turn the grain lab in.
Possibly, but I'm not sure on the sizing if there's actually gonna be enough space, as much space as you think. To meet the demand up here.
But in addition, out there would be cheaper than a new build too, probably. I mean, just, just, there's. There's an asset out there not being utilized and. And that would be, uh, you know, in the long run. If it's saved on. County capital expense to build another one on this, and you know, it depends on whether you get funding from the state, that's to do something.
Um, so all of this to say, like. So these dollars would be going to as an, uh, as yet developed nonprofit who is charged with creating this endowment. And managing it. So I'm not proposing like these dollars, these early learning dollars go to the existing. Nonprofits who are running the centers right now, I feel like there needs to be a countywide nonprofit.
It just takes you longer to get to an endowment doing that, I mean.
So my recommendation is that we tighten our belts in the general fund. We look for places that we can be a little bit more frugal in our travel and other places.
So have you looked at the? Budget, general fund budget, and you think you can get a million dollars out of it?
Not a full million, but I don't need to get a full million. Because we're diverting a million dollars in, but we're carrying over six hundred thousand. Um, so there's, yeah, so. Rachel and I will need to dig into some things, but for instance, there's a contingency light item that's sitting in our account that's three hundred thousand dollars in the county. Courts line item, we've never touched it. I'm not sure, given the discretionary dollars that we have sitting in other areas, if we actually need that amount. I've never asked that question, that's something Rachel and I can go talk to the auditors about. So of the four hundred thousand, if we don't need that contingency, that's already three hundred thousand of the four hundred. So I have looked at the budget to make sure that it wouldn't be a total. You know.
Well, you know, budget cuts and inflation is. Hard to do.
Yeah, my goal is to preserve, be able to continue to invest in our people, which is our biggest resource of the county. Make sure that they're compensated, they're, they've got benefits, all of those things that help them do their job well. And, um, that we're meeting the public's needs with all of those departments. Um, but then also there's some things that we have gotten a little lax on because we don't have to do what other counties do. We don't have to figure out how we're gonna make it balance because we just have been transferring in. These discretionary dollars to help cover whatever anybody wants, and so. I think knowing that there is unlimited resources. By its nature, people will look at their budgets and say, do I actually need this amount? I've never spent this amount the entire time I've been here, why am I asking for this amount, kind of thing?
So, and what would it look like if you did, you know, um, say twenty percent of that and left? Three percent in the general fund?
It's almost not enough money to matter. In the general fund.
Three percent, so.
And, I mean, you could do it for whatever reason, but I, if, if you can justify pulling that out, if you can justify pulling a hundred thousand out of the general fund and not have it. Be. Impactful in a way that a department can't do what it's supposed to do. That's the best place to get it, I think.
I, I mean, ideally. For our folks who work and are in general fund. Um, departments, not everybody is, but for those who are in there. That should provide a sense of security that we are living within our tax base, what our tax base can support.
Yeah. And then the other side of it is when you go back to the host fees agreement, this is probably not a economic development. Fund that we have stuck in economic development ordinance.
Yeah, there are portions, you know, I.
Kind of, if you want to try to figure out and follow the way through there and justify it, you can probably do that, but we're not saying this went here.
I can make a strong claim, for instance, that the planning department's activities to cite in probably are connected directly with economic development. But there are a lot of departments that just don't have that type, um, that are still vital things. The county has to have them and do that. So. Um. So what do you think in general of this concept of specifically calling out workforce? Housing development, setting aside a specific percentage. And also doing early learning sustainability and setting aside a certain percentage and then diverting the general fund percentage and the. Capital projects fund percentage and then. Assuming we can reach an agreement on the law enforcement one, the law enforcement percentage. It would be a big change.
Well, it's, it's a big change. I think it. I think it fits what we should be doing with the ordinance better.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with the, the general fund or the capital projects fund. I, I would be interested to hear what the sheriff's office says because I'm, I do know that a lot of that equipment will be expensive. And has to be, you know, changed and swapped out on an annual basis. So, but I don't know what that number is. Chris could probably tell us, but.
Four to eight thousand dollars a radio now.
Yeah, and they're expensive. And you get somebody that goes out on a fire and loses theirs.
This is, I'll tell you what's hard about this. For me is. It kind of needs to fit with the budget.
Uh huh. But. So here's the thing. Yeah. Um.
It's a timing is what I'm saying. When you look at the next year's fiscal budget, doesn't, you know, there's a ways out.
Yep, totally get that. Um. The challenge though is that the budget has to be written after this one is.
Yeah, oh, I know.
Because this one dictates.
I know.
Where the budget officer is directing the funds into. So. But.
Okay, so we haven't been through the budget work.
So look, here's, here's the relief valve. We always have the option. If, if, after we look at the budget, uh, worksheets that come in. If we are slightly, if we've made progress towards more sustainability, but we're still slightly in need of diverting discretionary funds in. We can divert SIP funds in to balance the general fund if we have to.
True.
So that's our fail.
Temporarily, we know we can do that for a few years.
We can do that. Um, and. I. And we'll also be able to see when that, when one of the SIPs rolls off, what that does to the tax base. So I think we can still, even though it's not ideal to have to divert discretionary dollars in. We can ea- we can easily do that. At the budget creation level with the budget committee. Without tinkering with an ordinance and having to do all the things we have to do with this particular set of funds that.
And some of those brainstorms.
Yeah.
Comes from waste management.
Absolutely. I, I would say the early learning stuff that I am pushing actually came from waste management in the rocket process. They suggested when we were talking about how you could do a permanent endowment. That as an employer, they would like the opportunity to help build that and that the host fees are a natural vehicle for them to be able to contribute.
Try to communicate that out there so that, I mean, it's, it's money that they're paying us for host fees for.
Right.
Trash that is delivered here.
Right, and yes.
And they're in agreement that this is a good place to put.
I have, as you guys know, have been talking about an endowment for a long time. But the host fee in particular idea came directly from waste management suggesting that might be a viable financial way to fund it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So. Would you feel comfortable if I come back with a draft? That is X-ing out the general fund, replacing it with, let's just call it early learning sustainability. And then X-ing out the county capital projects fund. And replacing that with, uh, workforce housing development.
Yes.
And then assuming. That we pay each agreement.
The only thing that I would kind of. N- knowing where we're at is. Is there any thought about increasing that one and lowering the other one a little percent or two?
So what if we did, um. What if we, yeah.
I mean, there, there are hand in hand issues.
Uh huh. Could we do a round number for the early learning sustainability of say twenty percent?
Oh, I'm much better with that.
And then.
Seven on the.
It would be, uh, seven, possibly eight, if I can reach an agreement with Gary on the one percent.
I'm better with that.
Okay.
On the housing, yep. That gets that housing fund at close to a half a million a year.
Much closer. Yep. Uh, which is a good change to be working with, I think. Um. Okay, so I will go back. Firstly, we'll talk to Gary and Chris about the law enforcement. Um, and come back with options. Um.
I did get the feeling last week from the governor that she was going to, once she threw this. Affordable housing homelessness issue that she is really going to refocus on workforce housing.
That is what she.
Some funding, you know, if we got match funding and stuff we can do to go into that. I talked to her a lot about the development up here and what. That's, that's the big hurdle is how do we develop this up here?
Uh huh. And then obviously, um, this does not. So this will not show up until next fiscal year's budget. So this will be. A calculated for then. In the meanwhile between then, the court will have decisions to make about who the partners are, who are, you know, like, I would assume we would eventually be signing an IGA, assuming the court's the partner, the chosen partner on the housing development. We get that in place, um, before. Those funds could be actually released, but they would be budgeted for next spring when we write the budget. And, uh, Rachel and Nathan would be really clear on where those distributions are, what they're meant to be set aside for. And, um. Yeah, and then on the early learning sustainability. Just so that you know, because this is my own, it's no secret, this is my own personal passion. I had started talking to folks of, who I think may be good board members to help manage an endowment type of a board. Um, some are local and then I've also actually been looking regionally at folks who are doing. Engaging employers and bigger funders in other parts of the state, uh, possibly other parts of the country who know how to raise funds. And so. I'm trying to figure out who's the right combination of people to bring skills together, um, that could be. Helpful to build because my expectation for this. Sort of new fledgling nonprofit would be that they're actually not just using the county's dollars, that they're actively going out and soliciting dollars from. Other entities for Gillon County kids specifically, but figuring out who are those other players out there. Looking kind of to the east a little bit and maybe some of our supportive moral people who, um, have some crossover with employees who are traveling for jobs and have kiddos that need a place to stay while they're working. So.
One thing I do like about adjusting the percentages that way, it does make the highest percentage line item economic development.
It does. It definitely does. Okay, so. Um. Here's what I think I'll try to do because this is a lengthy process to move this actually through. We have to do some public noticing and some other stuff. Would you like us, would you like to see this one more time before we kick off the hearing process or do you feel comfortable?
I, I'm comfortable with the changes that we discussed today.
Okay, so what Delaney and I will do is we will, um.
To expedite the process and it's not.
I love it. I'd love to have this wrapped up by the end of the.
Cause do you have to have two hearings?
Okay, I think it's, I don't know if it's two hearings since we're on Zoom now, we'll have to work into it, but, um, definitely two readings and, um, at least one hearing. So, um, and we'll have to, we have to give. A number of days notice before then, so we're going to have to map out on the calendar when it can actually happen. Keeping in mind that we don't have a second meeting in November for AOC, so we only have. We're down to four, five meetings left for this, uh, calendar year, almost maybe try to go through the October eighteen.
Yeah, and I mean, as soon as you find out, after you talk to the sheriff's office and then kind of maybe. Give us a heads up.
Yeah, give us.
And then move forward on.
Okay.
So we're in the loop on what went on there?
I'll have, uh, Miranda close the loop with you guys.
Okay.
That's what, what we settle on. Um, and then, but like I said, there'll be some administrative stuff from Chad's office and, um, I will, I will clean up the rationale. Um. And come up with some nice language to explain the workforce health, that, that's really easy to explain that the connection with economic development. And then we'll update the summary just to know what we, what was changed and we'll get a hearing scheduled. There'll be two readings, uh, in order for it to be adopted. And then it, uh, offices. Unless we have a state of emergency, which I don't think we would have justified it for this, is ninety days after it's adopted by the court, which will be, which will work for the budget of, um, time. So. This was an excellent discussion. I'm really excited about this. Okay. I knew this one was going to be immediate, which is why the rest of our agenda is light. Um. We don't have any new business for today, so let's move into announcements and next meeting, next meeting is. Content.
Um, what's been going on is I attended the McKed executive board meeting and. Interesting enough, the EDA re- reported to them that the review process, once they receive the paperwork, can take up to a year.
Oh, my goodness.
So my suggestion to the rest of the court is if you're in any conversations with Berkeley, Benz or Wyden's office. Tell them that's unacceptable.
Kick that loose? Okay.
Just, just because that's ridiculous. It's been approved by everybody, both governors and everything else. And for the federal government to hang it up on something like that, it blows my mind.
I just saw Kathleen on Friday, so I'll call her.
Yeah, make sure that they, I mean, I think it's, in both the, the. With EDA that and that releasing that grant on the lab, those, we just need to keep pushing our. Washington people to. Not let up.
Okay.
Um, I did tend the ALC Public Safety, Transportation, Community Development, Health and Human Services, those three, uh, meetings. And of course, we. Did the governor's tour where I did, I did the governor's tour at Waste Management and then we had lunch upstairs with Jed and Jeff and the governor. So. It was a good discussion and, and felt really good about, um, her engagement and, and stuff. I was a little surprised.
Pleasantly. I found that too, actually.
Yep. Um. Well, on Friday I went on a Korea, did a legislative tour to educate legislators about. What renewable energies and some of the stuff they may not really understand about what's going on with transmission and some of the issues that are out there. And that was in Kirk County and. Was really interesting with the data center stuff that's gone in Kirk County and how they've, there was a presentation on how they addressed their water issues and how the community in the county, um, basically. Primeville and the county and, um, the entities there put all that together and they've actually, I mean, they took. Unemployment rate from. Eighteen percent to five point three. And, and annual wage from thirty-one thousand to seventy-one thousand. Well, it, it's been a big, big deal and, uh. And I'll just a lot of it around renewable and be able, be enabled to get the renewable solar and substations and stuff that are, that have helped that area. So it was. It was good. I also met and I can't remember his name, but he, um, had three different discussions with me over there about bringing. Um, a solar manufacturing facility to Gillon County. And probably be meeting with him and going out looking at Shutter. Apparently. We think they're being built in China and most of them, China's having, being built Vietnam and he has connections to Vietnam and he's meeting with the Vietnamese prime minister this week and really pushing to try to get.
Cut the middle man out?
In, huh?
Cut the middle man out?
Get manufacturing in Oregon and, um. And, and I don't know how all that looks through, whether it's the Vietnamese companies or whether they're doing that in Oregon or what, but he's pushing really hard and looking for a place to do it. And then, uh, we received, and I was on the Lord John Dayak Committee Monday and they brought it up too, but Miranda sent me a. Text and an email on Friday and we received eight hundred and twelve thousand. Five hundred and eighteen dollars for an EV grant in our green space at the library and. Content, so that's exciting. I guess that's going to be administered through DOT somehow because it's federal funds with a lot of requirements to make sure we put in the proper equipment. I did miss the Biop Coalition meeting yesterday because I thought it was at three. Well, I thought it was at four and it was at three and. Sitting in the Riverside. Parking lots, Riverside High School waiting for Carson's volleyball game, trying to get on a meeting that had already happened.
Oh.
And then, um, I've got a meeting today with industrial company and then. Norcore and McKed tomorrow. My way to the NPR finals tomorrow.
So what kind of timeline would be loo- looking at to get the money for those EV? Stations?
Well, I, I don't, I mean, it's going to, DOT is going to kind of run that boat. They want to make sure things, they're a little uneasy because they've never put them in before and considered that. They do a lot of their programs that they do with federal funding. So they're not, they just want to make sure we don't, that, that there's not many wasted doing the wrong thing.
What I can gather, it looks like we have a kickoff call. Within the next couple of weeks and then they'll let us know, but the spring of twenty-four is like the earliest that they'll start providing funding.
Okay, so we're looking at least then before they can start on that.
Six, seven, nineteen minutes.
Which they don't want to start on it now, right? Going into winter anyway, so.
I do think as well, there's a. Work, ah, environmental assessment. There's a couple of things because of the funding stream. That we normally wouldn't jump through with the normal capital project that they want to make sure that we do, uh, correctly, I think.
And then we have sidewalk issue?
So the sidewalk would be wrapped into it. Um. We'll figure out, I think, like Miranda and Pat can kind of figure out.
There's, there's some, there's some issues even on the placement. We've got an idea where they're going to go. They, they could be adjusted a little. There's some. Um, just getting access in there and stuff that we kind of said this was going to do, but it might change a little.
And Bri was a little bit, expressed a little bit of concern that there was, it was a collaboration. So to make sure that the funding is strictly. For the EV chargers and not being used for any of.
So and how many stations is that? Is that like four?
Four, it's two.
That's a lot of money for four stations, nine hundred and twenty.
It's, um, well, a lot of the funding comes in on what's it take to get your. It's, it's your power infrastructure and all that is part of that.
Part of it. So we would be, the sidewalk portion would come out of the capital projects. And, and we would probably have Jeff manage that piece. And then the green space part, I think there's a state parks, uh, grant that might fit for that. So maybe Miranda and I can kind of work and see if we can find it. Um, but it would be for the green access. Between the parking and the little library structure.
Yeah, there's also the smart grant that ODOT offers, that they stress collaboration in like public spaces around libraries and stuff like that that. Served you, so that's another option.
So we've got a couple of grant options on the green space. I don't, uh, the sidewalk is likely gonna come out of uh.
It's gonna happen because the access and it's gotta be part of it anyway. And what has to happen anyway, if you don't do anything.
Yeah, it was a commitment. Uh, one, it was identified by the safety committee as an issue, um, because library staff are hauling books out um there and it's. All disintegrating, and then um. It was a commitment when we tore down the building to the city that we would fix it, um, so they've been patiently waiting for us to.
Yeah.
Live up to our work.
It's gonna take just to get all the pieces.
But. Can we just pause and say fantastic job, Miranda?
Yes.
Getting that, that was all, that was a heavy lift.
There was, she'd ask me questions, say, I don't know.
That especially, it's hard enough to write. Any kind of a grant that you're chasing, but when you're chasing something that you're not. Exactly sure the technology and how to like, kudos, that you did fantastic job. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely huge. Hey junk there.
Oh, and the, the one other thing is, anybody happens to be listening, we do have the SIPs presentation to learn about. Um, strategic. Investment program fund or uh agreements next week, next.
Wednesday. Six P M, it'll be here.
Here.
I emailed it out to all the taxing districts that I could. I also emailed it out to our agenda list, posted on our website, and I've had several people call and ask me about it, so I do think it'll be a well participated meeting.
And FYI, that's the day we have our big site review, so I'll probably be watching it on Zoom.
We can cover it for you.
Hey. I maybe as well, because I'm, I'm alone with my toddler.
I, I'll be here.
Okay.
No, no problem.
We'll get the Zoom up and running and I'll listen.
Site review is a one day deal, but I don't know.
Speaking of which. Your turn.
Okay, so transportation, we have applications in, um, we've reviewed them. I think we'll be. Hopefully setting up some interviews soon. Moving forward with that. Meanwhile, we've had, um, Cassandra Flat has. Agreed to come in and kind of help man the phones. I know that Delaney has went in there on Friday to check phone messages, so. We're plugging along. Miranda's helped with stuff, so everybody's kind of just pitched in and so. And all, we had a drivers' meeting on Monday to talk to, we had three of the drivers came in. They gave us some good input. Um, was good meeting, so. So everybody's just kind of. Plugging forward, so. Anyway, I've been learning how to dispatch.
Hands on commission, you'd love it.
Been trying to dispatch me via. Miranda, heck, who got me nailed down yet?
That's the thing, because she was like, do you want me to call Pat? I'm like, we might have to.
You were gonna be, uh, you would be potentially available, so I was taking advantage of that.
I was like, he would have to leave like way early down there just to be in Lone Rock, so.
What? Well, I'll just keep calling. You'll catch me.
But we do have um JD and Ann Dean are back um going again down here in Arlington, so they've been helpful. So. Anyway, Monday I had three meetings. I had a, I had a bunkhouse, I had a football game with Jack. And a South Gillum Health District meeting, and I chose to go to the football game to watch Jack. It was a fifth and sixth grade game and it was great, so.
He just told me you have your priorities.
I know, and it's like, oh, like. So I went to that and, but um I did talk to Cindy. Hinton after the meeting and she said that they had announced that they had hired. Lisa Helms as the administrator and it sounds like she will start um around the first of November, so. Give her employer plenty of time. And I'm going to, I think, I've been to the CAC meeting since we had our last meeting. Was that after?
Uh huh.
Yeah, and then I think we're attending the Advisory Committee tomorrow night.
Uh huh.
And. I'm going to CAC meeting on Friday.
I won't be at the Advisory Committee, so you're gonna have to handle the county stuff.
I'm just gonna sit and listen. I was at the CAC.
I've talked to Dewey, so we.
I was at the CAC meeting and, and um one of the members said, you know, well, you've been on there a year and something, and I said, no, eight months.
It's only felt that way.
It's like eight months, so, yeah.
She's already trying to recall herself.
Uh huh. I'll start the petition. Anyway, that's just about it for me. I think.
Uh, great, so I, uh, the nine one one board met last Tuesday, um. Still left. In desperate need of dispatchers. Uh, it's a little tricky because the issue is we also are uh trying to wrap up the very first contract negotiation with uh the dispatchers of the unionized state, so. We're in a weird position because the director can't really go out and advertise because we're not, we haven't settled on wages yet, um, and so we're in this weird holding position where. People obviously.
Did that just happen that they went in?
They uh gave us notice about a six, seven months ago, but it's been a process to get. It up and running and get this, and we, we didn't have a director and there was something that sort of took place.
Are they part of a statewide?
Yeah, so they're.
Dispatchers?
I think they're actually represented by the same union that represents uh police.
That's what I would guess.
Okay. And um, so I am not part of that bargaining team, but um they're moving closer, so hopefully we will have a contract soon. And that will allow us to more effectively.
Union strikes going on all over the nation and all over the state.
Yeah. But hopefully that will allow us to recruit more effectively as well. People will actually know what is being offered um for their employment. Um, other than that, the board is also in discussions with PCDC about PCDC developing housing for their dispatchers. So they are in discussions about a potential master lease and I think the PCDC board is looking at purchasing, I think there are two lots still left on the old baseball field. So they're talking about PCDC purchasing those, developing housing, and then signing a master lease with the nine one one board for nine one ones dispatchers to have a place to live. And also for our contractors who are right now. Filling in and kind of helping the center stay open, having a place to land while they're. In town, helping us out.
And they haven't stayed in the motel or hotel currently?
Yeah, a lot of them are um dispatching other centers and so they come in on their days off and then they're here for, say, forty-eight hours and. With twelve hour shifts. And then just sleeping basically at the hotel or motel and then, and then heading home. So it's an interesting dynamic, more to come, but I feel like we're start like inching towards maybe some progress. Um. Let me see what else. Uh, obviously, the governor was in town last week, as you have heard. Leanne and I were both at a dinner on Wednesday with her and a bunch of other community partners, as well as uh Wheeler, some of Wheeler County's representatives were there. Good wide ranging discussion on housing and childcare and measure one ten and. Uh, fire stuff and. The governor's tags for hunting and all, I mean, it, it ranged, it was, we covered a whole lot of stuff with her.
She didn't know she had a tag.
She did not. I had to explain to her what a governor's tag was, so she left with a little bit more knowledge.
Money of those to fish and wild.
She was, she would, it does. She was surprised that she had that in her name, um, and then the next morning, Thursday. She did a tour of the Condon Early Learning Center and did a roundtable with several community partners about that. And uh talked about what the Rocket Team was doing, some of the barriers that the centers are running into for providing service, all of that stuff. Felt very positive about, um. We got really wonky on some of the funding and staffing ratios and all that kind of stuff, so I have. Hopes that maybe we can move. Forward on some things that are creating headaches for our folks here.
Oh, I wish they, if they could just change the ratios like by one kid.
Just a little bit.
Across the state, it would make a difference.
It would. Um, thir- or Friday, I uh went up to Pendleton and participated in the governor's luncheon as part of the roundup uh celebration. And uh she was there, but I did not talk to her. I did see Kathleen Cathy, so um and a few other uh folks that we worked with.
Sure, sure, that was a good.
It's a, it's a nice kind of mid, end of summer opportunity to catch up with a lot of other county commissioners and.
Yeah.
Potential partners for things, so went and did that, um. What's coming up? Uh, we are moving forward with developing a, the, the early learning roadmap coming out of the Rocket stuff, so we're working on setting some. Uh, regular meetings with that group to continue momentum. Uh, I will be coming back to you at a later date with some more like specific things that uh. The court needs to decide how and where we're going to engage on. Um, wanted to note as well, uh, this afternoon, the City of Condon is doing a visioning, their first kickoff visioning meeting. There'll be some additional ones, but basically this is setting a long-term vision for the city in all aspects. How you want that city to feel and look like if you live there, um, so just a flag for community members. It's a good thing to keep a price down and provide input when the city asks for it. And I think that's it. Um, we do have AOC possibly next week in Sherman County. We're still trying to figure out if they're still holding that and. There's also gonna be an opportunity to provide some feedback on the fire.
I think they are, aren't they?
I think so, but we had called them about something else and like kind of got some mixed messages about. The twenty-eighth in Sherman County, yeah. Without some mis- mixed messages a little bit.
Well, if you hear something different, let me know.
Okay. It seems like it's on, but uh. At the end of that.
The fire map deal they're gonna.
In the afternoon. Is, I mean, the afternoon, and I did send that to Chris Fitz to distribute to uh the fire chiefs, uh. The uh. Why am I forgetting his title? Um. To Casey, yeah, and um, and I think Chris is planning on going as well, and maybe Corey Michaela, so we'll have good uh representation from the KFC. And that is all I have.
Yeah, I don't, I'm kind of holding off on whether I can go because. In case that site review drags into the next day, that could be, that could be a problem.
Could happen. Okay, um, anything else for the regular good of the order? If not. We are about to go into an executive session. We will not be making decisions coming out of it, so for those who are wanting to have, get the rest of your day back, feel free, you're not gonna miss anything. If you want to hang out in the room or on Zoom, also welcome to do that, um, we will come back, but just adjourn. Um, so, yeah, like I said, you're not gonna miss anything. Um, so the Gillum County Court will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two D, which allows the court to meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons. Designated by the governing body to carry out labor negotiations. Designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to remain in the public and virtual meeting room. While the court reconvenes in a private meeting room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects. During the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to the audience in the public and virtual meeting room. Okay, folks, so we will see you. One eleven, we are back in a public session and the meeting is adjourned.